Let's call the meeting in order. Uh, let's do the, um, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What happened when you sit in the first row? Everybody is here except Betty and she's been excused. No, uh, no changes to the published agenda, is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Doesn't look like there's anybody, Mr. Baldwin, he wants to, uh, everybody.
He might have something to say.
Yeah, you might have something to say, say something.
I don't have anything to be constructive.
I, that was nice.
Maybe after the party.
Yeah, or maybe during. Uh, the minutes, uh, for regular board meeting of November 11th, is there a motion to approve? So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications.
There's some nice donations again, uh, the Wapaka Foundry donated $500 to FFA, Wapaka Alliance Club. $200 was donated to our social worker for distribution among ladies students. Uh, once again, the Exxon Mobile Travel Center and Van Zelen Oil Company combined to, uh, award the Educational Alliance Grant of $500 to the high school, $250 for science and $250 for math, so appreciate that. An FFA alumni donated, uh, $1,089 to the FFA for purchase of Surface Pro 3.
What is that?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's like a tablet and a laptop together.
Interesting. How does that get used?
We will use it, um, for example, to take pictures, to record, to go on the internet. Um, the kids will take it home, those who don't have computers and work on FFA applications, um, you can get on the internet with it, you can use a thumb drive or removable drive on, on this one where you can't on Chrome's, so.
And you're gonna house that in your, your office area or classroom?
Let my kids take it home and, after I use it. Play with it for a while.
After you wear it out, the kids can take it home.
The FFA alumni has, um, $8,000 that they will give us and, like, two years ago and I just haven't decided what technology to invest in, so, you know, this is something that I was kind of waiting for and so we bought one, um, and see how it goes.
Good. Is there a motion to approve those donations? Thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would also like to say we got our FFA Christmas card, that's very nice, it's very professional looking too, I don't know who prints those up, but, thank you.
A gal from, um, a Gary Farmer from, um, Iowa took them, name is Danae Bower.
I thought maybe that would've been Surface Pro 3's first job.
Thank you.
School Board Visit.
Well, I'll start it out, uh, because, uh, I went to the chain schools', um, Christmas program, I brought the program with me, uh, not so much to revive because it really was a fun program, uh, but I, I didn't want to miss some of the names of people to thank here because I'm not sure, I wasn't sure of everybody, but, um, Mrs. Karen Hatfield and her and the teachers at the chain did a lovely job, I mean, and I was just saying, it's so much fun if you haven't been to the summer school, or the Christmas program, which I have not, for the younger crowd, uh, how many kids are in the audience? All of a sudden there are little kids running all over the place, uh, because they're all young families, which is fun, which is a lot of fun, it's, uh, so many times we go to things where adults only and we forget that there's a whole segment of the population out there that really enjoys going to programs like this. Very nicely done, a nice old program, uh, kids were all dressed up in their, you know, costumes and, uh, had a great time and I visited with a few of the adults' parents afterwards and they were all very, uh, very positive, so I, I, it was just a pleasure for me to go and I really enjoyed it, so, that was my visit so far, and, by the way, I think there are some other ones coming up, I think, uh, Christmas programs, um, I know we got some notice and I hope to get to at least one or two more before the season's over.
It was a district website, the opening page has a summary.
Yeah, I know, I've seen them, I just can't remember them all.
If you're looking for something to do, there's a place to find it. Anyone else?
Dave and I went to the Thanksgiving manners dinner activity, um, at the chain school before Thanksgiving.
Does he want to get credit too? No, that was me.
It differs.
Oh, no, not that.
I took Connie off the dinner that day.
It was very nice, I, I guess it's an annual thing, they had said that, um, they're kind of all grown their room, they, uh, headed in the little room behind the, um, I guess the gym at the chain school and, um, yeah, very well attended, the kids were directed to seat people and ask people, you know, what they want and they served soup and some vegetables and dip and bread, I didn't have the bread, but Dave had the bread and the kids made the bread and they churned the butter and, um, I guess cut things for the soup and the parents had donated all of the items, so it was, I guess, minimal cost. Um, the two teachers who put it on kindergarten and first grade?
Mrs. Linsky and?
Mrs. Walton.
Mrs. Walton, yes.
Yeah, they did very.
And the kids must invite their parents or grandparents or something to, to, to be there.
Yeah, and then at the end there was a kind of a trivia contest about manners, um, adults versus kids and it was great because the kids won. I wanted to say too, the Christmas programs, I heard the song Must Be Santa, um, not too long ago, and I haven't been to one of the Christmas programs in forever, but is that still what they do at the end of the WLC Christmas program, John, do they do the Must Be Santa?
They have the Rudolph song, it's the last one at the end.
Alright, so it's changed, anyway, that brought back so many memories, back when K through five was all packed in the gym at the same time and it was 1,000 degrees and kids everywhere, yeah, but it was, it was very fun and Ms. Anderson was the elf and who was always Santa.
Steve Hackett.
Could've been, yeah, so anyway, trip down memory lane.
Anyone else? Good. Uh, WSB ASP Resolutions, do you?
Yeah, uh, Pat Ferris is the only one who will be attending the WSB conference and, uh, so we made arrangements with WSB to redesignate our delegate, so he will be the delegate, uh, the, there was a link on the agenda to the resolutions, uh, and if you have anything to, you want to share about the resolutions or want to talk about, let me know, we'll put them on the January agenda so that we're back close to the convention, you can represent the board. Pat, did you get your packet from Betty?
No, she told me she did and, and she had something and she would get it to me, but she, she hasn't yet and obviously she's gone now, so, uh, I'm sure I will, but if you don't mind, I, I, just a couple of comments on those resolutions, I ran them off and went through them and, and I, I know they're kind of laborious, so I'm not gonna go through them all for people to, to, just to, uh, but I thought, there are 17 of them that they sent out and there are a few of them that are actually kind of appropriate to our specific, not specifically, but kind of some of the things that we're involved with, and one of them that I wanted to talk about anyway as, as far as coming up was, is Resolution Number Five, which has to do with the, uh, state funding and capability for the Course Options Program, and the reason that, um, I thought we should, we could talk about it because it's timely is, it has to do with our CAP programs and the cost of those, where we're going with that, and I know, Rob, you, your scheduling situation is coming up pretty soon, uh, about that, and I just wondered if anybody, I don't know, but if anybody's heard anything, what the state is gonna do about that, because we had a kind of a one year, um, I don't know, called it Band-Aid that went into effect.
Reprieve.
Reprieve, but we're sort of getting to the point where we're at, at the end of that one-year reprieve and now the question is, what are we gonna do about it? Now, the resolution asks, of course, for some, um, for, for the state to do some funding for districts so we don't have to all pick up the tab in the districts, but I guess, um, the question still comes back now is, um, if this doesn't happen and the state doesn't change its mind, which probably it won't in a very timely manner, uh, what are, what are we going to do? And, and I got that from some of the staff and I'm sure you're thinking the same thing, what are we going to do?
My, my best guess right now is that we'll be scheduling students before there's a resolution at the legislative level, uh, but I believe there will be a resolution, resolution from the legislature.
Okay.
They, they realize that they put districts in a real bind by doing this last year, so there will be some kind of resolution, but it's a leap of faith to go out and go ahead and schedule these kids, but we really don't have a choice, the law's the law, we will go ahead and abide by the law. If a student wants to sign up for this, we will have no choice but to sign them up and hold that legislation as, as adjusted.
Okay, so from?
Rob's or anything more than that, or?
No, you're, you're, you're correct, we're going ahead and we're signing students up for CAP courses, uh, we've made a determination that even if CAP were to go by the wayside, we believe that the courses are strong and that they're, they're rigorous and they're important for students to take, and, um, as we put our course catalog together for, uh, for scheduling, uh, we'll begin scheduling freshmen as early, that the current eighth graders at the end of December, beginning of January, so.
Right.
Uh, and we don't expect resolution on this until March at the earliest, so, um, we'll, we'll put some, uh, verbiage together that just lets parents know that we plan on offering these courses whether there's college credit associated with them or not, we still want to go ahead with them.
So if the college credit courses are offered and students sign up for them and we, as Dave suggests, we take a leap of faith, but we find that there's nothing's gonna change, where does the financial cost then lie?
Well, I think as a district, we still have the ability to decide whether we want to participate in CAP or not, so, I, I do think that we should make a decision at that point in time about whether we want to shoulder that cost, which would probably, based on the current year, it's over $30,000, um, or if we just want to withdraw from the CAP program and offer those courses as rigorous English courses, um, and not offer the, the college credit, and, and then students would have the opportunity to use Course Options and enroll at UW Stevens Point or UW Oshkosh and, and travel, we do have students that travel back and forth, uh, to UW Stevens Point, uh, there's two seniors right now that only spend half their day at the high school, the other half they're at UW Stevens Point.
Would you say that the cost though, uh, is approximately $30,000, would be, is that, is that, uh, the entire tuition cost, or are you referring to the half, one half? Because we always, in the past, always paid one half the district, and the student picked up the other half, so would that cost be to the district an additional $15,000 in this case, or would it be actually 60 and you're talking about there?
What, what the university did this year was they, they billed us for what the cost would've been had we paid the cost, and I'm not sure what they used as their funding formula, they are able to collect one half of UW Madison credit cost, so, I'm not sure if they use that as their funding formula, or if they use the $402.50, you know, that the, the old CAP formula was, all, all I know is that they billed us for an amount that was a little bit over $30,000, and then said, you don't have to pay this, we just wanted to show you what it'd really be.
Right. Because in the past, uh, we, the students would pick up half of it, you know, it's in one half and they did it in half, so in essence, it would've been a $15,000 approximately.
Students bore the cost of $402.50 per class, uh, the university gave us a discount on what the credits would cost because we supplied the teacher at our cost, and so that's, that's how they got to that number.
It needs to shape our, uh, make any decisions, uh, but, all I know, as in most cases, that districts, there are districts out there that will be in much worse shape than we are to shoulder those, those costs, um, those unexpected costs, I mean, if we put it that way. So I gotta believe something will be done through the legislature, and if not, we'll have some decisions to make and, uh, it's always our hope to preserve what we have.
I understand, well, I, as?
Opportunities, and I would lean in that direction.
Correct.
If that's what it comes to.
Well, as the, as the district's delegate in the upcoming, uh, convention, I can rest, you can rest assured that my feeling is that we want to resolve this with some kind of a, a resolution that says the, the state's gotta help us out here, um, and whatever the teeth to that that they put in, meaning the committee, is better, because all of us, I think, here probably believe, um, that at least the way it was in the past was at least workable, to take all of that funding off the table is, is not, uh, very fair to us as a board member, so I, I brought that up only because it's gonna be a real timely one coming up for scheduling and all of that sort of thing. And, and just one more thing is, because again, it's sort of timely and that, uh, I'm looking at Resolution Number of 11, uh, I think it's 10 and 11 or just, just 11 actually, um, it just so happens, 11 has to do with the rehiring, we've talked about this before, and the association, the School Board Association is trying to get the, uh, legislature to change the break period, uh, as you probably know, this has all been done in the past, a year or a year and a half, and it now reads to be a 75-day break, they'd like that to be changed back to, or not changed back, it used to be 30 days to 60 days, to give school district more flexibility, uh, when a person retires in terms of bringing them back for any number of reasons, and that's what this particular resolution is all about, and then that the, uh, the, there's another resolution which is a part of that, um, I think it's the next one or the one after, which has to do with their insurance, so that if you are a rehire, you, you don't put your insurance in jeopardy, okay? I think most of you know it, and again, this is a, just because I'm, I'll wear a different hat here, in fact, tomorrow, I'm going down to Madison because I sit on the Retirement Board, and this has come up in the same, um, in the same discussion at the Retirement Board, and I just thought I would make it publicly known again, I've said this before, but just to reiterate, that the break, uh, a person has from reemployment of a school district, which is presently at 75 days according to the law, does not mean that unless you are planning to come back and work for the district in three-quarter time, that it spells it out here, 880 hours, unless you're planning to do that or wanting to do that, um, the district is not supposed to talk to you for 75 days. The reality is, most teachers, and I think our administrators will tell you, that come back and work for the district as substitute teachers, as bus drivers, as coaches, have no intention of ever working 880 hours or three-quarter time, um, so, when we talked about it down at the retirement, um, meeting, um, the intent is really what the discussion is really about here, in other words, if, if a teacher, and I'll take, just use an example, I could use myself, but it'd be easier to say somebody like Steve Eldredge, okay, he retired a couple of years ago, he comes back and he, and he does some substitute teaching on occasion, he does some refereeing, he might do some coaching, you know, something of that nature, um, would he have to wait 75 days before he let his principal know that he is interested in, and the, and the principal would talk to him about substituting? No, he doesn't have to wait that long, okay? Um, only if the, the intent was to bring back his full-time teacher or three-quarters, then he'd have to wait 75 days to apply and have any discussion with his principal, but on the way out the door after he retires, if his principal says, hey, Steve, are you interested in coming back as a substitute, and he says, yeah, I'd love to, that's not what the intent of the law was ever intended to do, to put school districts in a bind as far as the people who might retire and then they might want to use it on a part-time basis, and that's the way it's looked at at the state level, I know what the law reads in terms of the language, and some of the legislators maybe would disagree, okay, um, on some of that, but the enforcement goes to the Retirement System Board, and the Retirement System Board says, we're not interested in, um, having anybody who wants to come back and work as a bus driver, as a school, as a substitute teacher, as a part-time this ed or whatever, we're not looking at doing anything with their retirement in terms of trying to cut that off, if they work that out ahead of time, in that 75 days, that's not a problem.
This doesn't only apply to teachers though?
No, it does not.
It applies to administrators as well.
Correct, that's exactly right, any employee who, who's in the system.
Yeah.
Have they put that in writing?
They won't put it in writing. And, I'm, I'm only telling you because I happen to be on that board, and it's, and it's a discussion, and what, the reason they won't put it in writing is because it would basically fly, fly, uh, fly in the face of some of the legislators' language, and then you have to get all kinds of legal things involved here, um, what they're saying though is, from the point of view, the people who enforce, our, our job is to make sure that the districts have the right people in the right place the best we can, and if you're in a small district especially, which we realize in Wisconsin, it's over half of the districts are tiny in terms of numbers of students and staff, and if somebody retires and then you, they, they come back to help out on a part-time basis, that, that, that's gonna happen, it's, it's, it's inevitable because of our small, um, communities, um, they're not good book to do anything about that, until which time somebody comes back full-time and has made some kind of agreement with authority, well, that's a different setup, but, um, most people just will come back and help out on occasion, and, and their point of view, it's not about 75 days, it doesn't really, because so many things would happen in between that'd be hard for districts to plan anything, if you had to wait that long, find out whether Steve Eldredge knows gonna come back and do some refereeing in the hall, and you're setting your schedule up the week after he, you know, retired, so, just so you know, and that, I, I say that because it happened to be at this resolution, and again, it's, it's being said here in this, in the same reason the School Board brings it up, school boards are put in a bind when you, uh, you know, don't allow people to, to communicate for 75 days, maybe not so much in ours, but certainly in ours.
Does that have to do with us? Do we ever, has, has that ever come up with us?
We've had people ask before they retire and indicate, I'd like to come back, and we've said, we're not gonna talk to you, because who's at risk? It's the employee who's at risk.
Employee's at risk.
They're the one taking the, taking the chance.
That's correct.
And, uh, but we don't want to be partnered to someone making plans to come back, making retirement decisions hinging upon their coming back to teach or to work.
In other words, in other words, they're going to take their retirement and then come back and work and double dip?
Correct, no, well, I don't think it's double dipping, I, some people do, um, that's the term that's been used, we've had.
Their retirement money is, is there more in?
Yeah, but the question is, it, they have to wait 75 days before, uh, they can start teaching and keeping their retirement, is what you're saying?
Or being the administrator.
Being rehired, now, as an example, we have, um, a German teacher, Mrs. Klein, who retired, and we had every intention to find a part-time German teacher, advertise for it, look for it, couldn't find one, so we went back to her and said, hey, would you come back part-time and help us, and we were able to do that legally.
Correct.
The, the time, at that time, the break period was met.
30 days only.
But we didn't talk to her about that before she retired, because we don't want her, hinging her retirement decision on, okay, I will retire, but I know I'm coming back, so we did that appropriately, years ago, we had a guidance counselor, Matt Matthews.
Mathway.
Mathway, yeah, who retired from a, uh, techno college, right, and came back, the district does not pay retirement to someone who is already retired, so, we saved the retirement costs for that person, um, so it's actually in our, it works in our favor to bring someone back in terms of costs, so we've made those arrangements, done them appropriately, we've denied people decisions ahead of time, administrators have asked before they retire, you know, can I come back and do half-time, uh, can I be, what's the program they call it, uh, but it's an arrangement made ahead of time, and I said no, because of this situation.
Right, well, this, this, this resolution, which is coming up in, in, in January to vote on, says they'd like to close that, uh, that window, 75 days is too long, because school districts, and that's what we really, that's what they, they want it to shorten to 60 days, which means that when you end, generally speaking, the 1st of June, uh, by the 1st of August, you can, you can talk to somebody, like the example, Mrs. Klein would have been a perfect example, because you got a hole to fill, but when you go 75 days, uh, it runs so long that you may not get to the beginning of the school year and you don't have those pieces of the puzzle in place, for some districts, and that's one of the reasons certainly that this is being shortened or asked to be shortened, okay? It was for, forever, it was 30 days, 30 days, it's, you know, it's not that long a period of time, generally speaking, and, and one more person, David, we had him, there was Ron Weber, he's our basketball coach, he retired, he waited 30 days, and then he reapplied and he was, you know, basically rehired, and he's still with us, but if he had to wait 75 days, it would've meant, as an example, the whole summer would've gone without anybody in place if, if in fact, we didn't, couldn't find anybody else before that, so you know, that, that's the reason for it, and that the School Board Association is asking for that to be changed, and so, you know, I just thought I would, I would make, bring that up, um, because it's kind of timely again, um, for some of the people in our district, so. Anything else that anybody sees there, I'd be happy to listen to, I mean, I, I'm gonna go down and listen and be, as you say, it could be lots of discussion on all of these, um, I probably won't discuss it, I'm probably just be a listener, but eventually I'll have to vote on them and, you know, I, I think most of, most of us would agree that what David, um, most of the, uh, resolutions here are, are pretty helpful for the School Board.
Pat, in that packet you get from Betty, and I, I have a copy here, I get one and she gets one, there are a number of resolutions that didn't make it through the process, but they're still brought up.
Oh, okay.
For discussion, um, they're usually particular to one district who has an issue and they want everyone to, uh, but in those resolutions, as well as the ones that we're talking about here, it's difficult for the board to take a position and say yes, vote yes on that one, because they are likely to change due to discussion, uh, so.
Yeah.
In, in effect, the board says to you, you understand our philosophy behind these.
Correct.
Stick to that, but we're not going to tell you.
Correct.
Yes or no. It's been a better experience. Future dates, we have the December 26th deadline for filing non-candidacy papers, and then January 6th deadline for filing candidacy papers, again, we have three positions, three terms available, um, and we'll see what happens, and January 13th is the regular School Board meeting. Takes us more than a minute?
Sure does.
Okay, uh, weren't taking a look at our summer school program today, it's a, one will be the academic and, um, the managing side of it, and the other will be the economic side of it, so, uh, Mr. Rome is our middle school, or our summer school principal, uh, and I don't know who's gonna start.
I'll probably start, this, this stuff just adds in and, it's all you had, it's like that, um, just kind of quick little add a glance about summer school, we'll pass each one of the year, um, just some quick things to just look at, and, the biggest thing is that the schedule, and we have played around a little bit in the last 10 years with it, um, let's put some of these out, let's see. The schedule for summer school has been anywhere from 10 to 12 days, um, per session, uh, this last year, we've made them uniform, because it had always been, um, June was 12 days and August was 10 days, the times were different and it just kind of confused parents a little bit, so we said, okay, we'll just do the maximum, which is, uh, four and a half hours of time, which is the maximum we can have, uh, for each student, uh, so we go from 8 to 12:30, and we do that for two weeks, uh, straight. So we go from eight to twelve-thirty, and we do that for two weeks, uh, straight in June, and then two weeks at the beginning of August as well. Courses we have vary from academic, such as alphabet connection, where pre-K through first grade kids work on writing the alphabet, learning, you know, the sounds of the alphabet, what words, uh, start with those letters, things like that. Uh, magic tree house, reading the books, and doing some art projects, booking and cooking, reading books again, and then taking some of this, um, making a recipe from the story. Content remediation, which is done for, um, fourth through eighth grade, uh, works on basic skills that are missing, um, or classes that kids may have, um, struggled with, uh, to make sure that they can do better at the next grade level. Non-academic would be things like soccer and art, movie making, uh, FIAED, we have games, 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 uh, things like that. Every year, uh, in January, you know, you start seeing that the days are getting a little bit longer, I sent out an email saying, hey, let's think about summer now. And, um, I get people telling me they're wanting to work, you know, teach these courses, uh, this session, uh, which room they want to work in, if they want to aid or teach, all those things. So I get a big database of everybody who's interested, and from that, I then, um, build a schedule, um, seeing we have all these classes that people want to teach. And then we can have kids sign up for classes, um, starting in April, and then decide based on the classes that the kids choose, what staffing needs we have, um, at that point. We try to have at least, um, eight kids in a class, um, some kids, some classes that are remediation, um, we hold regardless of, of how many kids are in there, especially when it gets to high school credits. Those classes, those kids need those credits, so we run them. Typically, we'll have no fewer than two or three, uh, we do say that the max cap is twelve for a high school course, um, but some of those, um, do get a little bit bigger at times. Depending upon whether the staff believes that the students that they have, um, can work in a larger class because they have a short amount of time to get a lot of work done. Mr. Bear has done some of those in the past and could talk firsthand about what that looks like, but, um, we have had, um, this last year, we had fifty-two teachers in June, forty-two in August, so June is a little bit bigger. We have seventeen aides in August, or June in thirteen and August, those are one-on-one aides, uh, for individual students. Uh, we also hire, um, nurses aide, we hire, um, office staff. I think with that, we have one amazing secretary, she deleted the amazing part, but I told her to put it in there anyway, she took it out. We have a nurse that we started hiring, uh, the last two years, and, uh, that has paid dividends, um, with a large number of allergies and diabetes and all the other issues we're seeing, um, coming through our schools now, and then myself as the administrator. Uh, any student in our district is eligible for summer school, uh, as long as they are, um, going into kindergarten and have not graduated, so that's the range.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
There are students who don't attend school here, they're vacationing here, who are also.
Correct. Right, so if they live in our district during the summer school months, um, they would count as well. My own kids do that, for example. Um, average number of kids, uh.
Can I just break in? Is that true for, um, uh, students who might be visiting, as you suggest, but just come in for one day and then go out again? I mean, is that, is it open to that sort of thing, or do they have to enroll?
They, they have to hang their hat during the time they're here.
For, for that two-week period or three weeks, so it doesn't like the whole summer, but just that two weeks they're going to be enrolled back there?
There are some that, you know, will rent vacation homes for.
Correct.
Summer, and they are eligible to come to summer school, because that's where they hang their hat. Uh, we have fifteen kids per class on average, some are larger, some are smaller. Um, we do have a few classes that have fees, and those are for, um, supplies that they might need, um, so they make things or eat things, and, um, I think it's a really good deal when you think eight dollars for food fund and they get to eat something every day.
How old do you have?
Well, if you're the administrator, you could go in and eat free. We are looking at some cooperation with the, uh, Packer Rec, Park and Rec Department, um, doing some things possibly with, uh, swim lessons, um, to, that's the one area that school and Park and Rec can overlap. And so we're going to look at some options there, um, where we take over, um, some of the stuff there and then count those kids. And then we're trying to coordinate schedules so that, um, we're not conflicting with each other and we can work, um, so that the things that we do just make more opportunities for those kids and vice versa. Any questions on the, kind of, the basic side of what's going on, otherwise Carl will talk, money, and what's going on with, uh, some other questions?
I want to move into Mr. High's presentation and then try to tie it together, then there might be some questions.
Um, so really, the, the premise of summer school is based upon minutes. Um, it's all about minutes, and each class, you can only have a class that goes, counts, you can only count maximum two-hundred-seventy minutes for a class. So if you had a class that's four hundred minutes, you only can count two-seventy. So you accumulate all these minutes throughout the year, and there are all these minutes for all these players, all these students in, involved in summer school, and then it's divided by forty-eight thousand six hundred. And you come up with a number, uh, and we've been averaging about forty-six, about forty-six students this year, forty-three. On the document I, I've given you called summer school cost analysis, I used the docu, the number forty-six. The forty-six really equates to only eighteen, because when you take your third Friday count and get into the revenue mechanism of the revenue cap formula, uh, it, it only allows you to count forty-six times point four, giving you eighteen. So. So when you put this all collectively together, we don't.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Beck, would you go out and check? See what that's about?
Yes.
No, no problem. Maybe it's Santa Claus. Is that what we were expecting, something I've been prepared for? Um, so what happens is, we don't tax the maximum, we, I talk about that all the time. So if you look at the revenue calculation, and that's how I determined, uh, we don't really get to ninety-one hundred per student, we get closer to seven thousand three hundred per student in the revenue cap formula. So if all, when all setting's done, it looks like we attained revenue, status quo, but a hundred thirty-five thousand. How much do we spend? We take salary and labor, you can see the, uh, line below that, including some minimal supplies, it's a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. So consequently, the program costs the district about forty-eight thousand dollars. So, we were asked basically to, what would we do if we added transportation, food, and things such as that? And there's two scenarios to that. One of the things, the first one to talk about is, uh, Waiauiga. Uh, we did some investigation, Waiauiga, because there's some, uh, there was some, you know, how do they do it? How do other school districts do it? Of course, we're all willing to learn, and one of the things Waiauiga does, when, what they do, is we start, well, they transport students. Well, what they do is they have a hub, they tra, anybody who can get their children to Fremont, they'll take a bus from Fremont to Waiauiga and get those kids there. That's how they trans, that's their transportation. Um, this analysis, uh, it's, how do they feed their kids? They're feeding all their kids. Well, they received, uh, statewide, I think it's a federal grant, not through the school district, but through the feds, basically, that they will feed every child between up to, uh, you know, three-year-olds in the district to eighteen. So consequently, that's a four-year grant, and that's how they're feeding them. They're really not, they're not even feeding them on-site, in my understanding, or they can feed them on-site, they, but they're not responsible for that cost. And the other thing they're doing is they're paying every staff member, not their hourly rate, they're paying them their, a twenty-five dollar flat fee. So those are the variables that get them a little bit different, that's, that's how they're providing transportation, that's how they're feeding their children, and that's how they're paying their staff. So, we did the analysis, which I have in the bottom of the right-hand corner of the top page that I, uh, I'm showing you, the estimate, if we added food, and believe me, these are estimates, because we're, we're just trying to see what transportation, we, uh, provide a transportation for, and there's roughly, I think, what, nine-hundred-some? It's a double county, but there's kids that do multitude of courses, so, how, if we were to trans, uh, transport all these children, if we're roughly, and best estimate is about fourteen thousand dollars. If we're to feed them, we have five thousand dollars in labor, and maybe twenty thousand dollars in food expense, um, that, we're projecting that to be about thirty-eight thousand. Then the program, rather than being about forty-eight thousand dollars shortfall, uh, it would be closer to eighty-six thousand dollars shortfall, uh, at the cost of the program. The final sheet of this document shows, well, what if we paid all our staff, uh, flat rate? So we go through that analysis, we paid everybody twenty-five dollars an hour, um, that would be, and one of the final pages show, that would save about forty-eight thousand dollars. So that would be the cost scenario there. Then I added bonus, we said, well, what if we paid all our support staff twelve bucks an hour, but actually that came, uh, a negative, and so we're only, I had, uh, I had wrong choice of words, it would cost forty-seven thousand dollars. So that's basically, you know, the long and the short of it, what I found out for cost scenario for, uh, the cost analysis of this district summer school.
So there are some districts who say they make money on summer school.
There are, and, and.
And perhaps if they pay a flat rate to, to staff.
If they play a, uh, pay a flat rate, but I've, the error I usually have found, and, um, from doing this analysis, and I've actually worked with the former, uh, district administrator, who now does summer school as kind of a, how do, how do districts, you know, get a, get more students in their summer school programs? That's what she does, kind of on a side WRS gig, and, and what she says, what the, usually the error is they count ninety-one hundred dollars, as you're seeing, times the forty-six, and that's where they come up with the revenue. That's what I've found most often in my analysis, but I'm certain there are some districts that are, are making money with a flat rate and things such as that, but one of the things I have found in my research would be that. And it's an easy calculation to miss, uh, quite, quite frankly, but, um, as you would take, in theory, that number times that forty-six, but they missed the point four.
Yeah, I have a question. I thought when we were just recently, the throes of our budget back in October, and you showed us all the numbers, and when we got to the line of summer school, it actually showed a, a, a cost there of, um, a plus fifteen hundred bucks or something like that. And when somebody asked a question, it was Betty or from me, and your response then was it was kind of a wash, but, but here, you're, you're showing the forty-eight thousand dollars.
Um, I don't, I know I did not respond that way to that.
Okay, well, what, what? And the line item in the budget, did it show forty-eight thousand?
Uh, the, actually, the overall budget doesn't even show summer school, it's all embedded collectively together, there's no line item separate, uh, in the budget that I presented to the school board.
I have to see what that is you're referring to.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, then how, if it's not, if it's not on there, where, where does it show up eventually?
It would show up, and it's a, it shows up in salary print, um, it's eight, uh, under project code eight-one-two, um, and, um, perhaps that was, um, I'm misunderstanding.
You just don't single out, uh, summer school?
No, I don't.
It's all lumped together?
But I just wondered, too, when you talked about summer school over the past years, that it was a mind maker.
In the past years, we, we did, you know, we used to do a, a form, and, um, we, we calculated it based on the idea that, you know, we had five thousand dollars per kid at that forty-six FTEs. That was what we were told to do at the time. You know, Carl came in and kind of changed up how it actually does factor in and so forth. So I think, in the past, we may have been looking at it a little bit wrongly, um, and now we're getting a better view of, of what it actually does cost. But it does impact over nine hundred kids in our district, you know, we have twenty-two hundred kids, and nine hundred of them are, are in summer school in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, we need to keep in mind that our, our regular education during the regular school year isn't that break-even basis either. That, that costs us money, and summer school costs us less money than our regular nine-month program for the first student. So, it, the goal has never been necessarily to make money off, but it's to see if we can come out as close even as we can, and depending on each year, it might be a little bit different. We're looking here at, what did you say, um, difference of thirty-eight thousand dollars? No, I'm sorry, forty-eight thousand dollars. So, ev- every year it's a little bit different.
So, and without testing kids, which of course we won't do more than that, but how do you, is there any kind of gauge with, like, the remedial courses and things from the beginning to the end? You know, to see if kids actually benefited from it?
Um, what it's, those are meant to do is, is to keep, you know, a lot of these kids, um, have motivation issues, uh, a lot of them have, um, issues where they're just, they're low in basic skills. So, they're in some of those classes to reinforce those basic skills, so that when they get to the next grade level, um, they're able to do a much better job. We do see some repeats because they get lazy again, uh, but some of the kids say, I don't want to be in summer school again, I want to work harder, um, to avoid having to go to summer school. And, and the key is, you know, they've been through the classes, they go through and get some more remediation, some more work at, at, and practice at doing those things. So that, when it does come to the next school year, you know, they, they've realized, okay, I've, I've failed, this was my consequence, I need to do better the next time. And we have several other programs during the school year that work to help that way as well. And sometimes, at some point, they need to learn that, you know, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, they're going to fail. And that's what the high school programs are all about, when they fail, uh, a class, they take, they can take up to half credit in any one of five areas, uh, to regain credit, but it's not, I mean, two and a half credits is not going to get you a diploma.
So the measure for high school kids is, do they get that credit or not? If they get the credit because of going to summer school, we know that's been a success. For elementary, uh, all the principals, we have policy, state policy that says students have to pass a test at a certain level, or advance to the next grade, um, because it's fourth and eighth grade. And if they don't pass in that test, then we say, summer school has to be part of your, in, in order to allow you to get to the next grade level, you must attend summer school. So it's kind of mandatory.
It becomes mandatory for many kids.
For, for those kids who did pass the, the test. And then, if they advance to the next grade level, we believe that summer school has been a success for, for them, so that's another way of measuring, how the kids actually benefit academically.
And the kids have courses, coursework, packet coursework, or computerized coursework, and a lot of those classes to complete, to show that they have completed that class to a certain level as well. Because they weren't able to do it in the regular school year, okay, here's that same type of coursework, I'll do it to a C level and go from there.
Just another question along, kind of following up on what Connie's, and I know you don't have it broken down here for us, but in your, in your best estimate, um, of the nine hundred students that we have in the summer school program, about what percentage of those are taking, uh, classes for enrichment, and about what number are taking, uh, for some kind of remedial or makeup?
I would say the majority are in enrichment, their courses.
Sixty-one is.
I, I would say it's probably closer to, um, eighty-twenty. Uh, because we, we have, um, very few, you know, we have some jumpstart classes that, um, kids take to work on those basic skills. We have, you know, the, all, all the high school, um, classes are, are remediation. We have some fourth grade and, and, um, remediation that has about eight kids, uh, a year, and then the middle school target remediation has between, um, eight and twenty students a year. And we had nine hundred and seventy students, seventy-one students last year in some form of summer school, uh, a large number of them in agri-science with Ms. Earp, um, doing different things that way, too.
Remember those are duplicated counts, nine hundred.
There are, there are, there are some duplicates, but we work hard to make sure that these are counted one time, um.
So it's possibly nine hundred different students attending summer school? Okay. Yeah.
I'll have Shannon do a better job of figuring that out for next year.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I was curious about that one, I mean, I, I assumed it too was a, a large percentage.
I have the number of every class that we've had, if you want to see that.
Yeah, no, 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 I don't, I just want to be a general.
Mr. Hill, what, what would you call a class where, and I know it's very successful prior to four-year-old kindergarten, where we would bring in four-year-olds or nearly five-year-olds to prepare them for kindergarten?
Our pre-K.
Would that be considered academic, or would that be considered enrichment?
I would consider that an academic, um, not remediation. I would consider that an academic, not remediation, because it's getting them prepared for-
But that was a very successful class, and teachers really appreciated it, and parents-
Right. We, we get usually about sixty kids, sixty to ninety kids involved in that program at some point in the two summer school sessions. Sometimes we get kids who do it twice because they didn't do it as well the first time through as their parents wanted them to. And we have some kids in, in a pre-first class who just, they weren't stellar at kindergarten, just need that basic repetitive nature of, you know, let's get through this again and work on those skills. That handles six kids, and then they do better at first grade.
You, you mentioned that you've had some discussion with the city in terms of the swim lessons as a part of a, a possibly coming into the, onto the umbrella of the program. How many, how many kids approximately does the swim lessons entail? Do you have any idea?
I, I do not know. Carl, do you think you could get that from?
I think it's two-hundred-and-forty.
Two-hundred-and-forty? And so those minutes for those students then would be able to add to our minutes?
As long as they're not held the same day that we have our summer school. Because if they get two-hundred-and-seventy minutes, doesn't matter what they do the rest of the day, we cannot count them.
Correct. But that's a pretty good sized group of people.
Right. And, and if we can get them and-
Basically twenty-five percent.
And Erin and I talked about holding those sessions opposite weeks that are not summer school weeks, and looking at some other things we can do in the future to kind of maximize involvement in both programs.
I'm interested in talking a little bit more about the food program. When you calculated these costs, is that a breakfast program, breakfast, lunch, or?
Just a lunch program.
Just a lunch program. I'd be very interested to know. I'm just, this, hopefully, it could be a worthwhile investment by the district, but I probably want to know more about whether it would be needing, need, something beyond convenience.
What are the hours of the summer school program? What time do you-
Eight to twelve-thirty.
It is eight o'clock, okay.
And, and one of the things that we are talking with the park and rec about is the possibility of having some kind of lunch served through their program. And that's just very basic preliminary discussions, but as we move forward, it's something that we'll look at, the possibility of doing something there. It could be as, as simple as peanut butter and jelly sandwiches that they, that they offer. You know, but it's, it's something that's still in discussions. We just had a five-minute conversation on that issue, so.
So there might be some students who come to our summer school program in the morning, go to the rec department for lunch, and then stay at the rec department for their programming in the afternoon.
Correct. And that's kind of what we're talking about, because that would maximize, you know, a parent could drop off their kid eight o'clock in the morning for school, pick them up at the rec center at three or four o'clock, and, you know, it's a much cheaper form of daycare for four weeks of the summer.
Do you mind keeping an eye on them, on the students who might not be participating in both programs, where we might be filling a gap there if we still have?
You know, right now, everything is very preliminary. What we've had so far has been, you know, the parents pick up their kids, and every now and then, there's one kid who's kind of forgotten, if you will, their parent, we've got to call their parent, and, and, you know, I thought mom was coming to get you and dad was coming. Oh, so we end up, you can hold a grandma and grandpa, and then, you know, they, they bring them. But most time, all the kids are gone by quarter to, to one o'clock.
I think what Sandy's asking you for the breakfast program, if we see kids come hungry, could we fill a need there?
You know, a lot of kids do take, you know, our food classes, book and cook-in, food fun, and we make sure that if a kid wants to be in that class and we have space, that they're in there. And we help them with fees if needed, stuff like that, so. And the kids who are in there, you know, we have some kids who try to take it twice because they want to eat it twice. Those are the teenage boys who just like to eat, so.
Well, I do appreciate that you're, you're looking into all of this, because I think it's, it is potentially something that we could do that would be worth while.
And following up on that, Carl, do you think we would, would we be eligible for a federal grant for food if we applied? I mean, do we, are we, do we meet what you would take to be the, the requirement here?
We may not quite deny, because our, may not meet the threshold of free and reduced, and I, I'm thinking that's the answer.
Fifty percent, or about forty-three, or fifty-two. But why is it not fifty percent?
Could be, they could be earmark, are they earmarking this certain elementary sector at Waioga? I'm not sure of that answer.
But maybe, okay, so it sounds like we could look into it though, and if we, if we meet requirements, maybe we could, and if we don't, we don't.
Yes.
Mr. Ray, you indicated that there were fifty-two teachers in the first session and forty-two in the second, or they oftentimes are same teachers?
Yes, yes.
Of those that come forward, how many, as a general percentage, how many do we normally accommodate? Of the teachers that express an interest?
It's hard to say, because sometimes they back out, and sometimes, you know, they're not selected. But we have a large number of people who are interested in doing something. We have found that the ones who come up with their own classes and develop a class typically promote summer school best and get the kids to take their classes and others. And so they're kind of our best asset. They may be a little costlier because they're more experienced, but, you know, if we don't have those people pushing the, the program, then we probably see a hundred or more less kids in our summer school program, or more. I couldn't tell you a percentage.
Is the thinking at this point that now that you have a pretty good handle on the expenses, and it's a pretty big chunk of money that it's costing, that we're going to kind of review the benefits of this, especially if eighty percent is enrichment and, you know, let's be honest, free babysitting?
Well, I'd say enrichment does not mean that it's just fun and games.
I understand that, but it's, it's a lot, for the most part. I mean, it's not, their kids can get something out of everything that they, you know, take part in, but it's not a necessary curriculum.
You know, they'll do some, some reading stuff, some math stuff, in a lot of these courses. And we see, you know, every year, when we look at math testing, there's a drop from the spring test to the fall test. The kids lose percentile ranking to other, other kids in their national norm. I think summer school helps to keep the kids' minds active, keep them thinking about school. You know, the kids, the teachers will talk about reading books, talk about doing those things, even if they're not doing that in the class, per se. They do keep the idea of, of being an active learner open, and I think that helps our, our test scores overall.
It would be interesting to see, and I don't think we've ever mined it out, how was that, did attempt perform, whether or not they had a lesser drop or a whole drop versus those that didn't happen?
We, we do notice some of them with our, like, our Read One Eighty summer school program, where they're reading in the summer, and then they take the, the, the math test in the, the fall, that their scores do go up. You know, we do see that with those targeted programs, we, we see the results. You know, we could probably look at some more of them with other classes as well and see, you know, what do we get? But I've only been able to look at the middle school data and see that. Maybe elementary has, has a different feel on things, because most, a lot more of the kids are from the elementary school that takes summer school, so.
Well, and maybe knowing this, maybe there should be a little more of a goal to be more academic and that, you know, is touching on basic courses, you know. Fifty thousand is a lot of money.
Here's a really thought, Bill. Are you giving students enrolling in summer school who might not be, and not in remediation, not where they're told they need to do this, who aren't having great success during regular school year, that think summer school's the best thing since?
We, we get a lot of those, those types where, you know, academically, they don't shine, but they're in summer school and they're finding success there in various ways. You know, sometimes they need to remind them about appropriate behaviors and so forth. But by and large, summer school behavior, and the kids do a very good job. The teachers handle things in the classroom, and the kids find success all the way around.
So that would be a real value for the program, I would think, too, just having an experience in the school that's perhaps different.
Well, maybe it's kind of always, but that aside, there is definitely benefits to it. But I guess I, knowing this now, I would like to scrutinize it just a little bit more, the benefits of it.
I think that's important. In addition to that, before I would toss out summer school, I would look that way to determine costs. And there are more and more districts that are going to a flat rate compensation for staff rather than paying them per year. You can see the difference in costs in some of those. If you recall, years ago, through a negotiations process, we proposed that the core or academic, teachers of academic courses during summer school would be paid at per year, but people of enrichment courses, teachers of enrichment courses, where they don't need certification to teach what they're doing, would be paid a flat rate. So we were looking at that, and it didn't go anywhere through negotiations, but maybe that's something we need to visit. The counter to that is, well, then you won't get as many teachers interested in, in teaching. Other districts seem to do just fine with that.
Well, the other thing that would be interesting to see is if we do some collaboration with the city and bring in a whole another group, equal to two-hundred-some, seventy, thirty, whatever it was, may make a difference as well. So there'll be some cost obviously to us.
I was going to say, what, what is our obligation? And we just can't take their minutes and count them.
Our obligation is to have a director or supervisor over that program, so we would be obligated to some labor costs associated with that. And if you look at two-hundred-and-forty students, the forty-minute swimming school lessons, times, you know, point four, it's all about minutes again. Two-forty being equate to, it's forty divided by forty-eight thousand, six hundred minutes. Again, you accumulate all the minutes, so it's, it's, it's more of a idea of kind of collaboration. Will it be a windfall? Probably not, but will it bring some revenue more to the table? Yeah.
So that would be helpful at least, right?
Where does the forty-eight thousand, forty-
Yeah, explain those numbers.
That comes from the DPI. It's basically their calculation. They, they, that's in their, it's almost like a revenue cap formula methodology. They, you get all these minutes, you put them in this formula, they divide it by forty-eight thousand, six hundred, and whatever number, you know, ends up-
Is that what they use as a full-time student?
Right.
Yes.
That's what they, that's a full-time student.
Academic year, that's a full-time student.
So forty-eight thousand equals one.
So if you're going to compare the funding during the school year to summer school funding, one is forty-eight thousand minutes.
Okay.
Then that-
Yeah.
Can I have a quick question? Are there any classes for special needs kids during the summer?
Uh, we, we have offered, we all, always do an early childhood class. So kids who are ages three to five, maybe six, they're working on some of those basic skills, and their needs could be academic, they could be social, you know, at that age, there's a lot of different things. And we typically have five or six of those kids. We've offered in the past. Programs for CDS are completely disabled students, middle school and high school, they do different things. The last few years, that is not run. We do things, our Read One Eighty program is for, is reading intervention, and it works with special ed and regular ed students. You know, we, we offer things for our LD students that just go along with everything else.
Are they well-attended, or?
Uh, the Read One Eighty program gets a, a good number of students. The older you get, the less students want to take summer school. You know, we, we try to offer things that they're going to want to do, and then have teachers trying to promote those classes. We've had some that are very successful, others that are not. You know, the elementary is, is our bread and butter for summer school. And really up through the sixth grade.
Speech and language are summer school, or is that what's happening?
That's secondary. Typically, they'll serve through summer. You know, a lot of the special needs students, I think, are integrated into their classes because there's so much enrichment and activity hands-on, and then they have their, some aid support as well to assist the teachers. We like to try to integrate them as much as possible with the general to be students.
I know some districts do a couple of different sessions for special needs kids to keep them, you know, up to, you know, so they don't regress during the summer.
Sometimes their IEP requires that they have services during the summer, and that's a way to fold it into a summer program.
And do we have kids with IEPs that do require that?
We don't have any IEPs, so I probably indicate that. But it's asked after meeting, so part of, part of the questions is asked, do they need?
We've had it in the past.
I said this year.
Right, but we have had it in the past.
If there were a kid, a couple of kids that needed that, we would offer it, or we would?
Or we'd have to.
I want a quick question. We have some, you mentioned the ten days, but we have some programs that go beyond the ten days.
We have a Bayard program which serves one-hundred-and-fifty-four students, and I think Miss Herb, you take, what, four days off in the summer? It's something like that. It's not many. Between Miss Herb and Miss Layman, they're doing things with kids almost every day in the summer. And, you know, I get a nice big log of all the things they're doing, and I think that takes me more time than anything else to go through that.
So we're able to count that for summer school, that, that B program, and you said a band program, right?
Yeah, band program.
July Fourth parade, that's-
So high, high school band, middle school band.
Why do you give her two days off or four days off?
I don't. She takes those. You, you guys give her the enough of times. I don't know.
Good. Thank you, everyone. Consent agenda. Is there a motion? Thirty-second?
Second.
Pat Baer.
Aye.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
Stephen Johnson.
Yes.
Kirsten Greenfield.
Yes.
Connie Baldwin.
Yes.
And Stephen Shamble.
Yes.
Motion carries. Seeing there's nothing else, we will adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
It hasn't happened yet.
It may have first. Thank you, everyone.